Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators and all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Reverend Bill Queen Jr., St. Paul's Episcopal Church, Richmond, Virginia. The senators will remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America by Clerk of the Senate Susan Clark Scharf.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of all, Sustainer of our lives, Source of all wisdom, and Judge of our souls. We pray that your Spirit of guidance will direct the minds, the hearts, the words, and the actions of these members of the Virginia Senate gathered to do urgent work for our Commonwealth. May they remember and act to honor the lost lives, the broken families, and the shattered communities that have suffered from gun violence. Help them to set aside differences of party and of personality, that together they may find a way forward that serves the best interests of all of the people of Virginia, and especially of the most vulnerable among us, women and children, the young and the poor. May their actions today move us closer to a world where peace and justice, mercy and faith may prevail. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll. All those present will please record their vote. Clerk will close the roll.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The clerk will report a certain communication on the desk.
Commonwealth of Virginia Executive Department proclamation. In accordance with the provisions of Article 4, Section 6, and Article 5, Section 5 of the Constitution of Virginia, and the powers thereby vested in the governor to call a special session of the General Assembly, I, Ralph S. Northern, Governor of Virginia, do hereby summon the members of the Senate and the House of Delegates constituting the General Assembly of Virginia to meet in special session in their respective chambers in the Capitol at Richmond, commencing the ninth day of July 2019, for the purpose of consideration of legislation related to the emergency of gun violence in the Commonwealth of Virginia, given under my hand as Governor of Virginia and under the lesser seal of the Commonwealth at Richmond the seventh day of June 2019, and in the 243rd year of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Senators operating under the rules of the Senate adopted at the commencement of the 2016 session. Chair recognizes Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal, for the purpose of taking up a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and SR 4001 be taken up for immediate consideration, which is the blue sheet on your desk.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title and engrossment be waived, and Senate Resolution 4001 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution Number 4001, 2019, Special Session 1, Operating Resolution.
Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the resolution be agreed to in speaking to the motion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, this is the operating resolution that we introduce at the beginning of each regular and special session, and it is the same language that we have used historically for all those previous encounters.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0. The resolution is agreed to. Senator Norman is ordered to inform the House of Delegates that the Senate is duly organized and ready to proceed to business. Now comes a time in our session where we have the privilege and honor of greeting our guests who joined us here in the Senate Gallery in our morning hour. I would give my usual reminder that the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up, recognize an individual or group. I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate, and at the very end of that process, we will all clap together and greet our guests. So I would like to begin by recognizing Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPite.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for two purposes.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
The first is for to have the journal note the absence of my seatmate, who is away from the Capitol on pressing personal business.
Thank the senator. Journal will so note.
And the second is to ask you, Mr. President, to welcome. We have several groups here in the gallery joining us to see us for the special session. We have some friends here from Indivisible Nova East, Indivisible Nova West, and Moms Demand Action Prince William County, and, Mr. President, I ask you to provide them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Indivisible Nova East, Indivisible Nova West, and Moms Demand Action Prince William County, please rise in the gallery if you are able? It's been a while. We're going to wait to clap until the very end, but wanted to thank you all so much for joining us here in the Capitol today. Thank you for your advocacy and for your work on behalf of so many people here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You, of course, are welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone, please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our special guests. Take a brief pause in the morning hour. Sergeant at arms.
Mr. President, a message from the House.
Please receive it.
The gentleman from Shenandoah, Delegate Gilbert.
Mr. President, I've been directed by the Speaker of the House of Delegates to inform the Senate that the House is duly organized and ready to proceed to business, and further that the House has agreed to HJR 4003, limiting legislation to be considered by the 2019 Special Session, Number 1 of the General Assembly, and establishing a schedule for the conduct of business for such session.
The chair recognizes Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and HJR 4003 be taken up for immediate consideration.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended, the Committee on Rules be discharged from further consideration of the resolution, the readings of the title be waived, and HJR 4003 be taken up for immediate consideration? As many as are in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 37; noes, 0.
Ayes, 37; noes, 0. The rules are suspended to take up the resolution for immediate consideration. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the resolution be agreed to in speaking to it briefly.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, as the members of the body are probably aware, but just a little bit of a refresher, when we go into a special session, the bills that can be prefilled are the ones that are specifically pursuant to the governor's call. If you look at this joint resolution that comes over from the House on Procedure, it does add in Little I, Public Safety, double Little I, Mental and Behavioral Health, and then three Little I, which is dealing with appropriations for the victims in Virginia Beach. So, Mr. President, with that, I would renew the motion that the resolution be agreed to.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the resolution be agreed to? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0. The resolution is agreed to. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal, will inform the House of Delegates of the action Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Mr. President, I move the rules be suspended to exceed the limit and introduce memorial and commending resolutions.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended to exceed the limit and introduce memorial and commending resolutions? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0.
Ayes, 38; noes, 0. The rules are suspended to introduce memorial and commending resolutions. Now, without objection, we're going to return here to the morning hour. I'd like to call on the senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distef.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Senator.
Sitting in the gallery today, we have Victoria Makaloff from Virginia Beach. She drove all the way up here early, early, early this morning just to come up and have discussions with us, hear our discussions, and be present at the Capitol. With that, I hope we bring the warmest welcome of the Senate to her.
Thank the senator. Would our friend Victoria Makaloff please rise in the gallery if you are able? All right, let's try this again. We'll wait to clap at the very end, but Victoria, thank you so much for joining us here today. Thank you for making the drive. I know that Senator Distef appreciates you being here, as we all do, and taking part in the democratic process. So now I would ask everybody, please, join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to Victoria Makaloff. The junior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Ms. President. I rise for two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you. Today's invocation was given by the Reverend William Bill Queen, who serves as St. Paul's Interim Rector, providing pastoral support and spiritual leadership for that congregation. Reverend Queen joined the ministry in December of 1994 after graduating from Virginia Theological Seminary, and he and his wife Lynn Ellen have resided in Richmond for over 20 years.
I thank the senator, and I believe Reverend Queen mentioned on his way out that he had to go back to his church.
That makes sense.
But I know he appreciates very much your eloquent words and generous welcome. We appreciated his beautiful prayer this morning, so I would ask everybody to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to the Reverend William Queen Jr. Junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also joining us in the gallery, we have the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Richmond, which remains at the forefront of youth development. Their efforts for the 2019 Summer Session of Teen Programming are concentrated on career exploration, a sense of community, cultural immersion, and academics. The goal is to level the playing field for youth by providing them with critical components, positive interactions, empowering experiences, and increased exposure to youth development and leadership opportunities. Teen ambassadors will have fun by way of new happenings, challenging programming, expanded horizons, group projects, and celebrating their triumphs during the seven-week session. And I ask that we give the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Richmond a warm welcome.
Thank the senator. Would our leaders from the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you. Four times the charm. We're going to wait till the very end. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. We appreciate the work that you're doing with the Boys and Girls Club. We see your brilliant, beautiful faces and wish you nothing but the best in your futures. Please study hard, dream big, and great things will happen for each one of you. So now, I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond. You deserve that round of applause. Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purpose of two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you so much. First, I would like to welcome a friend of mine that's here today, also a nurse and a mother. Her name is Ashley, and she's with her son Dylan and her daughter Maria and her mother-in-law Dawn, and I will, her mother Dawn, and I'll say, Mr. President, not only do I hope we will welcome her today, but thank her for her service to Virginia because she is the wife of our Senator David Suterline. So I hope you will give her the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Ashley, Dylan, Maria, and Dawn please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all. Oh, my goodness, she's adorable. Go ahead and clap for her. How about, you guys can do it. I know you want to. Thank you all so much for being here today. We are honored by your presence. You're, of course, part of this great Senate family. I know that Senator Suterline, in particular, is very grateful for all that you do to allow him to serve and to make our Commonwealth a better place for everyone. You have a gorgeous family. We wish you nothing but the best, and I would ask everybody to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to the Suterline family. Senator from Henrico, Senator Dunham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to welcome a young man who has been interning with me this summer, who has been an extraordinary addition to my team, and I'm glad to say I've gotten to know him as a friend as well. So I hope you will welcome Daniel Longest.
Thank the senator. Would Daniel Longest please rise in the gallery if you are able? Back there? Hey, Daniel. Daniel, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you also for your tremendous work on behalf of Senator Dunham and also all Virginians. We have really bright, brilliant, young minds who help our legislative process work very efficiently, so thank you for your dedication and commitment to the Senate and to the people of the Commonwealth of Virginia. I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, we're honored today to have with us the distinguished mayor of the seven-time All-American City of Roanoke, Sherman Lee, and along with the distinguished Councilwoman Trish White Boyd. And I'd ask you to please give Mayor Lee and Councilwoman White Boyd the very warm welcome of the Senate. Thank you.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders and dear friends, Mayor Sherman Lee and Councilwoman Trish White Boyd from Roanoke City, please rise to gallery. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's always a pleasure and a privilege to have you here with us in Richmond. Thank you for the tremendous work you do in Roanoke to make that such a special place and a wonderful city, and I know Senator Edwards from Roanoke City is so proud of the work and of your partnership, making it a seven-time All-American City. I love visiting the Star City and look forward to many brilliant things in the future under your leadership. So please tell Sherman Lee Jr. also that I said hello. He's a tremendous leader in Roanoke as well, and I would ask everyone to please join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our great leaders of Roanoke City, Mayor Lee and Councilwoman Trish White Boyd. Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise for introduction.
I thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, we have with us in the gallery, and I believe in other rooms, a number of my constituents, and I assume constituents from other jurisdictions. I know that there were constituents of mine from Hanover, Essex, and I think it was Richmond County that came up to me today that are with the NRA and asked that you offer them and all the other members that are here to express their thoughts to each of their members the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the NRA in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's obviously a very important special legislative session, and it's critically important that we hear from our constituents and folks who are willing to get involved civically in our democratic process. We appreciate you taking the time out and your families for supporting you in this effort, and so I echo the generous and eloquent words of Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal, and I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our guests from the NRA. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
The first one, you don't have a green sheet for, but we're joined in the gallery today by the former mayor of the City of Alexandria, Allison Silverberg, and on behalf of Senators Barker, Sazlo, myself, I'd ask you to welcome her. And I would note that I met the former mayor in August of 1981, so she's probably the person here. I know she's the one here who's known me the longest, but I know particularly one of the things that she loves about the Virginia Senate the most is that we're able to appropriate money for beginning to aid Alexandria's combined sewer overflow problem. So I believe Allison's still up there.
I thank the senator. Would Mayor Allison Silverberg please rise in the gallery if you are able? Madam Mayor, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you also for your leadership in Alexandria and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. We appreciate your dedicated service over many years. I know the Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben, in particular, appreciates your partnership and your continued advocacy for so many people to help them get a shot at the American dream. So we are grateful to you, look forward to seeing you for many, many years to come in roles of leadership, and I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leader, Mayor Silverberg. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the second introduction, I wanted to mention that several of the more than 500 members of the Alexandria chapter of Moms Demand Action are here today. And again, on behalf of Senators Barker, Sazlo, myself, I would just point out that Moms Demand Action is a national organization with more than 5 million members, including 20-plus Virginia chapters. And though they're called Moms Demand Action, they're not all moms. They're citizens of all stripes working to combat gun violence through the legislative and public policy process. They include moms, dads, veterans, students, and many others, so I would ask that you give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Moms Demand Action in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your presence on this particularly special occasion in this special session. We appreciate, again, the advocacy of wonderful citizens who are willing to get involved, to have their voices be heard, and to fight on behalf of so many other people around the Commonwealth of Virginia. We appreciate you. You are always welcome here in the Capitol, and I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our special guest from Moms Demand Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boyssco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, today I'd like to introduce you to some of the most civically active community members from Northwest Fairfax County, the Herndon-Reston Indivisible Group. Herndon-Reston Indivisible has been meeting monthly since 2016. They advocate for gun violence prevention, for health care, for social security solvency, as well as making sure that they are using their voices on other issues. A big group of them have come down today to watch what happens here, to share their thoughts and hopes, and I hope that, Mr. President, you will give them a warm Senate welcome.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from Herndon-Reston Indivisible please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today. Thank you for your presence in the Capitol during the special session and also throughout the year. You're not strangers here to the legislative process, and we really appreciate your advocacy, your dedication to not only Herndon and Reston communities, but to everyone here in the Commonwealth of Virginia to make it a better place for all of us. So we are grateful to you. You're welcome back here anytime. We echo the generous and eloquent words of Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boyssco, and I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our friends from Herndon-Reston Indivisible. Senator, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sazlo.
Rise for the purposes of introduction, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Seated in the gallery today, and I'll introduce them all at one time, are people who are gun violence survivors or, you know, parents of. The first is Lizette Johnson from Menlothee in Virginia. She survived after being shot four times in front of her children by her verbally abusive husband in 2009. As she stand, Mrs. Shodel, or Shodel Walton, and her grandfather, the Reverend James Wilkins of Richmond. She was riding a scooter in 2012 when she was 11 years old and was hit in the head by a single bullet and survived. Mark Winfield and Andrew Goddard. Mark's daughter, Mark Kaya Dickinson of Richmond, was shot and killed by random gunfire on Memorial Day, Sunday, in 2019 in a city park here in Richmond. And Andrew Goddard, Andrew's son, Colin, was shot four times and survived the Virginia Tech massacre in 2007, and I would ask that you give them the warm welcome of the Senate, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. Would our distinguished guests and your family members?
Also, excuse me, Andrea Scharf, I think, is also here.
Thank the senator. Would all those named and your family members please rise in gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today. We know it's a particularly powerful moment for you and for your families. We appreciate the fact that you're willing to turn the pain that your families have experienced into purpose, into helping other people avoid the tragedies that have befallen your families, which obviously are very strong, very filled with faith and purpose, and you make us a better Commonwealth of Virginia by making the memories of your loved ones who were lost and for those who have been harmed, to show that you can rise above it, and you can make us all aspire to something more, to be a community that cares for one another, that protects one another, and that does not want to see this kind of tragedy happen ever again. So we are grateful to every single one of you. We love you. We love your family members, and you, of course, are welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everyone, please, to join me in extending the warmest welcome of the Senate Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson. Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, I would like to introduce Tracy Holliday and her son, Micah Tally. They are joining us. They are members of New Life Deliverance Tabernacle Church in the city of Richmond, and I understand they're here at your invitation. So I'm speaking on your behalf, I guess you might say.
Thank the senator very kindly. Would our friends, Micah and Tracy, please rise in the gallery? Micah and Tracy, thank you all so much for joining us here today. And it really is a special privilege and honor to have you here in the Senate of Virginia. I understand, particularly, Micah, this is your first visit here to the Capitol, but certainly not your last. Tracy raised a brilliant young man. I had the privilege and pleasure of meeting him in Richmond at a gun violence prevention rally, and he actually was the drummer in this amazing choir. Micah is only 13 years old, has been playing the drums since he was five, and he's also interested in engineering and STEM, and he has got a brilliant future ahead of him. So we are honored to have you. You are welcome back here anytime. And I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our two distinguished guests, Micah and Tracy. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? Seeing none, Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Good afternoon again, Mr. President.
Afternoon, Senator.
Today and now, I request unanimous consent to introduce a bill related to the Virginia's VB Strong license plates for those lost in the tragedy because across Virginia, we're all VB Strong.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate grant unanimous consent to introduce a bill? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the consent of the Senate is granted to introduce the bill. Senator will be at ease.
... forty fourteen through Senate Resolution forty thirty be considered in the block by voice vote waiving the reading of the resolutions with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution. All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk, read the numbers of the resolutions.
Senate Resolutions four thousand fourteen, four thousand sixteen, four thousand eighteen, four thousand nineteen, four thousand twenty, four thousand twenty-one, four thousand twenty-two, four thousand twenty-three, four thousand twenty-four, four thousand twenty-nine, four thousand thirty.
Question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolutions are agreed to. Senator will stand at ease.
If I could respectfully call on Madam Clerk for any announcements that she may have on her desk pertaining to future committee meetings.
Senator.
Yes, sir. Today, the Committee for Courts of Justice will meet 30 minutes after adjournment, Committee Room A, in the Pocahontas Building. Courts of Justice, 30 minutes after adjournment, Committee Room A, Pocahontas. Committee on Education and Health will meet 30 minutes after adjournment, Senate Room Three, in the Capitol. Education and Health, 30 minutes after adjournment, Senate Room Three, in the Capitol.
Madam Clerk, I apologize, an interruption in communication. The Education and Health Committee will meet at the venue you suggested, 30 minutes after adjournment, and when they complete their business, because they have a very short calendar, then the Courts Committee will meet, and therefore it will allow those who serve on both committees to have the opportunity to participate. So, I apologize, that was not communicated to you. With that, Madam Clerk, I would respectfully yield to the Senator from Lynchburg.
Lynchburg or Bedford? Senator from Bedford.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn until November the 18th at 12 noon.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the Senate stand adjourned?
Mr. President.
Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Gentlemen, yield for a question.
Will Senator yield?
Mr. President, I will not yield. Under the rules of the Senate, the motion is non-debatable.
Senator will not yield, motion is non-debatable.
May I speak to the motion, then?
Not debatable.
Not debatable.
Motion's on the floor. Question is, shall the Senate adjourn until November the 18th at 12 noon? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. Chairs uncertain will have a recorded vote. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn the Senate until November 18th at 12 noon will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 20 knows 18.
Ayes, 20 knows 18. The motion passes. Senate stands adjourned until November the 18th at 12 noon.